All right, good evening, everyone. Thank you for being here. We will bring the Harris County Board of Commissioners meeting of June the 8th to order. And we'll have the invocation by Mr. Taylor.
Thank you. Could you please join me in praying for our prayers? To God and Father, we thank you for this day. We thank you for our lives and the spiritual blessings that you bestow upon us. Nowwithstanding all the physical amenities that we always enjoy, we should remember that your physical blessings upon us and your promise of a Savior are the most important things. We pray that you bless us both tonight as it deliberates the business of the county. We pray for our president and our leaders of our country and all those that protect us not only on foreign soil but protect us here in Harris County. We pray that everybody that is here tonight will be blessed by what this county does and what this board does. We pray all these things in Christ's name.
Commissioner Andrews, please join me at the side of the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the fire of the United States of America and to the republic with its hands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
And before we begin, I talked to Commissioner Lang. We talked to him just a little while ago. And he's doing well. He's recovering from his surgery, working hard with his PT therapist, and hopes to be back soon. So we hope to have him back soon. Our first item on the agenda is the approval of the minutes, the regulation of June the 4th of 2019, and also the budget work session four of May 30th of 2019. Is there a motion?
No.
Motion.
Okay, there's a motion. A second. Are there any changes or discussion? All right, all those in favor? All right, motion is answered. Is there an appearance? No, it's no one saying no. All right. Under O business, we have the second reading of the emergency management ordinance. The first reading was at our last meeting. The ordinance is to bring our current ordinance up today to reflect the changes that have been implemented by GMA over the years, and it's based on the model ordinance provided by ACCG. As I said last meeting, I'm not going to read it to you because you'd all be asleep. So is there a motion to approve?
I made the motion to approve.
Motion and second. All those in favor? Under new business, there is a resolution to adopt the comprehensive plan. Many of you know and were a part of our work sessions to update our comprehensive plan, which is required by the state. It has been sent to the Department of Community Affairs for review and approval. DCA has approved the plan, and we must now officially adopt the plan by resolution. Is there a motion?
I make the motion that we approve the resolution to adopt the comprehensive plan 2019 to 2024.
Okay, is there a second?
No.
Okay, there is a motion and second. Is there any discussion or any questions? I think probably since last, it's been a year since we began working on our comprehensive plan. I think probably there's been a lot of discussion and many questions have been asked. All those in favor? Okay, motion and second. Resolution is adopted. The next item on our agenda is the bid award Rails to Trails Phase One. Randy, can I get you to do that?
The bid award for Rails to Trails Phase One, this has been a very long time coming. The county did purchase the abandoned rail line from the Muskogee County Line going north to the Merriweather County Line back in 2008. Soon thereafter, the county applied for a federal transportation enhancement grant and didn't receive that half a million dollar grant. It was, as a federal grant, it had a lot of hoops to jump through, a lot of permitting processes, environmental clearances to go through. But after 10 years of going through the permitting processes, the federal government makes you jump through, the federal funds have finally been released. And therefore, we went out for bid in last month, and we did get four bidders on May 20th. And Phase One is from downtown Pine Mountain, Chipley Street, going to the intersection of State Route 18, 387, or D Street, right there at the country store. That's Phase One. And that, the low bid came at $561,221.08. The high bidder was $1,114,832.54. So we are recommending that the low bidder, Southeastern Site Development from Newton, Georgia, receive this bid award. Of the $561,221, the T grant, the federal T grant, will pay for $512,473 portion of that, and the county will have to match the balance as is required by federal law. So basically, that's Phase One. And we did receive, the county did receive two additional federal grants to continue from the intersection all the way down to somewhere behind the Mountain Creek again. So, and the two, and the grants could not be combined. So we're going to have to go out for Phase Two of the grant very, very soon in order to make the project look seamless. And all this should be finished by this fall. So that's basically the project in a nutshell, and all these costs have been put in the upcoming budget beginning July 1st. Matt Smith with Carter-Sloop Engineers, our consulting engineers on this project, is in attendance to respond to any questions that the board may have.
Okay, thank you. Is there a motion?
I make the motion to award the bid to Southeastern Site Developments for $561,221.08 and to authorize the county manager to execute the contract.
Okay, and I'll second that. Is there any discussion or any questions?
Has this company ever done like a Rails to Trails before?
They have, they're a road contractor. They are working on the 2019 project in the county right now. So this is a small project for them.
I mean, I just didn't want somebody to do that, but also we have to turn around and go back and fix it or do something.
These, all contractors have to be DOT pre-qualified, as will the contractors bidding on the next two phases. And so these have been met DOT's standard for the board.
And we talked to the city of Pine Mountain, Randy, about the construction that's going to be going on in the middle of their town, in the middle of tourist season, and they understand and they're working with us.
Yes, I'm working hand in hand with Bear Truck. We communicate almost on a, almost weekly basis. He knows exactly what's happening tonight. He knows when projects are going to start. He knows exactly where it's going to start. And he's, and the Pine Mountain has offered to use some of their city facilities for storing and staging. So they have been working, we've been working with Pine Mountain head in hand during this entire process.
Good. Okay, since there is a motion and a second to approve the bid to Southeastern Site Development, all those in favor? Okay, motion carries. Next on our agenda, under new business, is the financial statement for April 2019. Is there a motion? I make the motion to accept. Is there a second? All right, there's a motion and second. Are there any questions?
I'd just like to ask Clint, since we're, this financial statement is April, and here we are in June, is there anything that you are concerned about as we get to the end of the year?
Really, to be honest with you, like again, this fiscal year 19 budget, I, you know, looking through here, the revenues are essentially all in. If you look through here, mostly over 100% for the most part. Interest looks really good. Really, if we go to the general fund departments, the only spot that I see on here may be community center, and that's a note that I put in here that that was more of a budgeting issue because of the pool had been closed down for three months. We based that off of that. And so it's making that number look a little bit tighter. But other than that, I mean, the department heads are well within all of their budgets on that. They've done an awesome job this year on that. Where our splasts are all fully spent except for 14. That looks good. The projects that we have on here, I mean, really, it's, there's nothing in here that gets concerned at this point through the schedule statements.
I make the motion to accept the financial statement.
All right, here's a, yeah, that should be a second. Okay, that's mine. All those in favor?
I love you.
All right. I was here. My actual statement is approved. Okay, the next item on our agenda under new business is the Cherokee Trail Acceptance The county's received a petition from 88% of the property owners on Cherokee Trail requesting that the county consider acceptance of the road. Of their eight property owners, whose properties have bought the road, seven have signed. Mike Brandt, our Public Works Director, has inspected the road, and it meets all the criteria for road acceptance, and it's in relatively good condition. The cost estimate regarding road work is a total estimated amount of $33,310. Per hour road acceptance ordinance, the property owners will be responsible for the cost of the driveway, the plant survey, and legal work. The recommendation of our Public Works Director, Mike Brandt, is to accept the road for maintenance purposes only. And is, do we need a motion moving forward with the road acceptance process for maintenance purposes only? Is there a motion?
This road is in my district. I'll make the motion that we accept it for maintenance purposes only.
Okay, and I'll second that. All those in favor? Okay, motion carries. It is approved. And the next item is our EMC Task Order Number Three, the Design Permit for construction administration for Pitts Drive. And I'm going to ask Randy to give a EMC overview now.
Men of the board commissioners, pitch, the paving of Pitts Drive, it is currently a thorough road. It has been in the budget all year, and it's also in the budget next year to pave this .62 miles of road. All the roadway has been acquired for this road, except for a very small portion in the curve, is a very, very tiny portion. However, we want to get the, this paving project moving using our available funds. That's in the budget. So we contacted EMC Engineering, a company that the county has used before successfully for design of paving projects in the past, such as Hardage Road and Washington Road. EMC Engineering has submitted a proposal to design permit and provide construction administration for Pitts Drive. During the design process, which is a lengthy process, the county attorney and the EMC folks can coordinate and acquire the remaining small portion of needed roadway during the design phase. And once the design is, once the project is designed and permitted, the project will be bid out and awarded. Again, this paving the road is very lengthy. The entire project should be completed in about 250 days for design, permitting, bidding, possible utility relocations, as well as construction, you know, weather permitting and all sorts of things. Funding is in the, of the upcoming budget, $65,000 for design and construction administration, and $850,000 to pave the road and install a water line. So that's a total cost of about $915,000. So basically, we're recommending the board approve Task Order Three for EMC to begin the design process, and once this is designed, bid it out.
Okay, thank you, Randy. This road, Pitts Drive, is in the district that I represent, so I will make the motion that we approve EMC Task Order Number Three in the amount of $59,000.
No.
There's a motion and a second. Are there any questions or any discussion? Do we have any timeline of whether or not even yet to begin?
Design will begin tomorrow.
Okay.
And then obviously, the two hundred and fifty days will begin tomorrow.
Okay, thank you.
And then with weather permitting and all that stuff.
Yeah, that's understood. Okay, and, 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 Madam Chairman, according to the task order, the design, I think about plus or minus 60 days. Okay. It's in the task order. Thank you. All right, all those in favor? Motion carries. Thank you. The next item on our agenda is our public hearing for budget, FY 19 and 20. The, this is the second of two public hearings regarding the proposed budget. And the, in addition to the first public hearing on June 4th, we had four budget work sessions, May 7th, 21st, 28th, and May 3rd. At that, at that time, we heard from our department heads, spent a lot of time talking with them about their needs, their wants, wish we could give them all their wants, but not possible. The public hearing is open to anyone, I'll allow the public hearing just a second, that may wish to speak about the front budget, proposed budget. So we will open the public hearing. Is there anyone who would like to speak in favor of the budget?
Hi, good evening. I am Kimrae Tharha, President and CEO of the Chamber of Commerce. I know that there's been some discussion about the tourism portion of the budget, and presented a more detailed budget to y'all, to Randy, yesterday. I wanted to know if anyone has any questions. Wonderful, thank you so much. If I can take just a minute, I want to introduce my, my staff, my team and their tourism department, if you will. Dawn, Megan, they're my staff. My board chair, John Asbell, is here in support. Pam Bauer, she's my tourism chair, she's with Molly Gardens. And Desan Timmons is with the FDR State Park, as well as her. Thank y'all very much.
Thank you. Is there anyone else who would like to speak in favor?
Hello?
All right. You just, you can, you can press, please.
462 West Pine Drive, Metropolitan Fortson, Georgia. I just wanted to come in as a representative of the Harris County Soccer Association. Ms. Andrews, you had asked us to get in touch with Mr. Pope at the Verge Power. I did so the very next day. He, basically, a very nice guy. I worked with his senior staking engineer, Brent Lofton, for a week, week and a half or whatnot. Anyway, they didn't really give me a reason, but basically, all the Verge Power is going to be able to offer is just a meter, basically, just a runoff of. And we would be responsible for hiring somebody else to come in and do the lights, as I know. So they did not offer a big proposal on doing lights, and I even asked them if they would give us one for new lights, and they didn't have any offer for. So that's the only other offer I got. So the only other thing I have, of course, is the Georgia power estimate that you guys have. I have not had time to reach out to, you know, anybody else to come in and work off of whatever their estimate may be from the Verge Power. But I did want you to know that I did go and actively pursue that. Of course, I'm asking for you guys to consider putting what we asked for into your budget this year. You know, again, we're willing to work with you guys. We, even if it's not all, we need something. We, our numbers are up. Just as an example, our select teams, we had two in the spring. After our only first tryouts, we've already got six teams come into the fall, and that's just in that group of approximately number 20 to 25, 30 recreational teams as well. So six o'clock, we'd start really quick. So we would really, really appreciate it if we work with you guys and get this done. If there's any questions y'all have, please feel free to yell at me. I know Ross got a question.
No, I think we questioned out.
Is there anyone else who would like to speak in favor of the proposed budget? Anyone that would like to speak in opposition? No one in opposition? Okay, we will close the public hearing. If there's any discussion, any questions on the proposed budget, on the board?
Men of the board commissioners, you do have in your agenda package all the changes that have been made from the original submittal. So if it's not in the original submittal and it's not here, it's not in the budget. So just making sure of that. Again, we're here to be, cut an hour here to answer any questions, to work it out on the budget, make sure everybody's comfortable with approving this budget that has been discussed thus far. Any cuts we have made, we can address those. Anything that wants to know, we'll be more happy to entertain any questions.
Anyone have any questions?
Since we received the budget from the Chamber of Commerce, where are we on them getting the $60,000 for 2019? I know we've, we've been holding it until this.
We're closer than we were. We have a current agreement in force with this hotel motel budget that appears to be compliant with state law in a sufficient detail for us to work with. Maybe just a few minor court reports, and we're done. So, so we're, we're there.
So they could get the $60,000 for this year? Because I know this, that's been held.
Yeah, so what's been...
And that's what I'm asking, so are we at the point now where we're about ready to release the $60,000 to them?
Is it 60?
It's, water has been collected from January 1st to current date.
Right.
Water that is.
Yeah.
Right. So we are very close to releasing those funds because they have been, they have committed, they have complied with the grant, with the grant, with the contract requirements, say, for, you know, a few court reports. But we can knock those out in a day or two.
So that still would be the 5%?
That would be as budgeted and as the contract really exists.
Right. How long is that contract?
It's an annual contract, renewable every, every June 30th, as far as it's June 30th.
But it can be, it can be canceled or renegotiated when we give them the appropriate notice prior to the renewal date.
Right, so the renewal date would be January 30th. What would the appropriate notice be?
No, the renewal date runs on a fiscal year basis, as I understand. So you'll have this March 8th when you need to start thinking about it.
I still have a problem with us giving 5% when by law, we can keep part of it for the county to help the county. You know, and that's part of, you know, I do know the city of Pine Mountain keeps part of their hotel motel tax. You know, it's nothing I have against the Chamber of Commerce, because I think they do a good job. But I also know that the county, you know, some of that money, we could use for our purposes that we need to help the people of the county. So if we were going to change that, where they got 3%, and say, we kept 2%, what would we have to do to have that happen?
We'd have to give them notice of the next year when the contract comes around. It's time to renegotiate, we determine that the contract and renegotiate.
So this is the first year that they've got the 5% versus a 3%?
It started January 1st.
January 1st.
And the contract ran from January 1st to July 1, and then it will self-renew July 1, until June 30th of next year, runs on a fiscal year basis. And that's the reason we ran it only six months, was so that you get on a fiscal year basis, the same as the county.
And just to clarify, Commissioner Brandt is referring to, is those funds that the county can keep, likes to keep, whether it's 10%, 3%, whatever, does go into the general fund, and there are no restrictions on how that money is spent. As long as it's spent for any legal purpose, it can go into the general fund.
But for this upcoming budget that we have for the upcoming year, we have to leave it at 5%.
Yes.
That's why, that's my understanding.
Yes. Because they, they have complied, but recently...
Right.
...with the contract requirement.
But as you said, recently, they were actually a month late on when the budget was supposed to be in.
The budget should have been put in in early May.
I don't have a problem with it this year, but I think we need to see a little more and better advertising and things, and more on the monthly reports that you're talking about, more on the budget of how they're going to actually promote FDR, how they're going to promote everything for the hotel motel tax. I think, you know, that money, I don't know if you, as the county manager, somebody needs to stay on top of that with them, but I think we need to do a better job of that. Because I do know that FDR would like a billboard, and I see on, out on the interstate, and I see on the budget, you know, it's a wish list. Well, if we're supposed to spend money back advertising FDR Park, which happens to be the largest park in the state of Georgia, then I don't think the billboard's been on the wish list. I think the billboard should be on the, that should be a priority if that's what we're supposed to do, promote that park. And if it was up to me, we'd do like two or three billboards. We'd put one coming in from Tennessee, one coming in from Florida, about Austin, maybe one over in Sagualline. And advertising, you don't want to put one out here by us, because we all know what we got. We want to get everybody else to come in here. And I don't know about y'all, I actually, I happen to like our park. I think it's one of the best ones around. You know, I just think we need to stay on top of this more, and maybe look at this 5% going into the next year, if at this moment in time, we can't change it.
All right. Any other items of the budget? I think we do need to discuss some of our proposals, if we want to do, if you want to do anything like that, or there's, is there any, are there any amendments on that?
Yeah, just don't make me go. As y'all know, I'm a recreational guy, and my feeling is, is that I feel that the soccer lights could end up helping our soccer program. And I don't, I don't have, that's not the issue. But when I look at everything else we're doing at the county, at this time, right now, I don't know if that's something we can do. I think it's something we might need to make sure we keep on the back burner and try to do and put in for next year, or going in so we know it's coming. I would love to do it this year, I'm not sure if it can, and I'm not, but I would like to see it happen, but then at least, you know, let's get it started on, within the next year or two, maybe get a little bit more information about how we're going to do the lights and power, what's going to happen after that to pay for electricity, get a little bit more information. I don't want to scrap it. I don't see how we can do it right now, but I do want to keep it out on the forefront, because I think that's something we need to do, hopefully in the near future. Because I do believe it will help our soccer complex.
And I think that most folks know how I feel about public and private court machines. I think we need more in Harris County. The only thing that I'm concerned about with not placing it in this year's budget, and I think we talked about this, we could place it in the budget, but it might not happen.
No, if it's, if it's for the budget, it's my job to make sure it happens.
Okay, all right. The thing about it is, we are, we are going to have a salary spending, and we're going to have to deal with it in February.
It begins in February.
It begins in February. It begins in February, which will be finished about the time where our budget talks for next year. So we're going to have to deal with that too.
Right.
So I don't know, I don't know how we're going to deal with that. And I don't know, we have no idea what the cost will be. And that, those are just my comments on this. So are there any other issues?
In the meeting we had earlier, that is, that's a big issue that will impact this current budget, that, that cost is in here, and it's a real concern.
Yes, it is. And I agree with you on that. There is another issue that we're not really going to particularly discuss at the moment that you're on, that we're going to have to take into consideration.
Well, then let me ask you this. Our cable fee, if we went up to what the law told us we could do, up from two percent or three percent, where are we at, two?
Two.
If we went up to five percent, which is what the law says we can do, and I know most of our cities in the county have already done that, and I believe we're the only county that did not do it.
I think we're one of the, one of the two counties that in the entire state of Georgia, is that two percent and up to maximum five.
All right, if we went up to five, which we're legally able to do, well, do we think that might generate in an extra, say seventy, eighty, ninety thousand dollars, somewhere in there, that we could actually turn around and take that money that would allow us to have this leeway for these soccer lights?
The full five percent of the cable franchise fee would generate a hundred and twenty thousand more. So we're at about eighty thousand at the two percent in this current year. That would put us up to two hundred thousand dollars at the full five percent.
If we did that, that might add up, that would add in enough money where I would feel comfortable putting these soccer lights in this budget, knowing if we're going to do that. Because the law, the state, you know, says that we're able to do that. And then if we're doing that, then hopefully the people would understand, since most of our cities already have gone up to five percent, they don't stand. But one of the things we're doing is, okay, we might have gone up, but what we're going to do is we're going to turn around and put it right back at that soccer complex. And your kids are going to be the ones to benefit and play in there, if you have kids, or if you just want to walk around the trail, whatever the case may be. I mean, I could, if we can do that, then I could see putting those soccer lights in.
I would suggest this, if you're going to do that, do that first and then come back and amend your budget.
Oh, yes. Yes, perhaps we would have to vote to do that.
Right. But now, like, you know, the cable TV franchise fee going from two percent to five percent, that's, there might be a timeline.
Right.
Because you have to, we, we have to renegotiate all the franchise agreements we currently have, if they haven't already expired, to have the franchisees go from two to five percent. So that's going to take a while to go through that process. But there's companies out there, like the Georgia Municipal Association, that for a small fee will do that for us probably for much quicker. So that, that is an option. And in the two percent to five percent, that goes on every year. It's not a one-time shot.
Right.
It keeps on giving.
Every year. And on the, and just, just for clarification, when I mentioned the public private partnership on the soccer lights, Soccer Association on their own was able to obtain the lights from Double Stag Mountain Fort Bend at no cost. And they came to us and asked us if we would be willing to partner in having those lights erected out of the soccer field. They also have agreed that they will pay a portion of the cost. So there are a lot of things that still need to be worked out. There are a lot of, there are agreements that need to be done if we put that in, if we put that in the budget. But first, I like the idea on the cable fee, and if there's a consensus to do that, then we would have to vote that, vote for that. And then come back and, as you say, amend the budget. And I think that's the best way to do it.
Yeah.
Anything else on the budget? Is there anything we've forgotten, Randy, that you can think of?
There were that, no, there were nothing to address that we hadn't opened. Those are open items, but I can't think of any. All right, the next item on the agenda is the budget.
Did you check and vote?
No, it's being done now. That's what we're going to do now.
Okay, okay.
That's what we're doing now. The adoption, the resolution for the adoption of the FY nineteen and twenty budget. Our nineteen and twenty budget includes our general fund, special revenue funds, capital project funds, debt service fund, enterprise funds, which is the airport solid waste and fireworks. And we need a motion.
If we approve this, we will be able to come back and amend?
And the budget. We can do that.
Anytime of the year.
Yeah.
I think so far this fiscal year, that's going to end in about two weeks, we have about eight or nine budget amendments. So, so with eight or nine budget amendments, that's very, very few, which is indicative of a good budget. You're welcome.
All right, any other questions on this?
Make the motion that we adopt the budget as presented.
There's a motion to adopt the budget. Is there a second? There's a motion in the second. No other questions, no other discussions?
I will, I have, I will say this. I still have questions, I still have issues with our budget. Probably that's because I'm the new person. And I'm just, you know, we're just going through this process, and I'm trying to get my head wrapped around some of it. I still do have some issues and questions and problems, but that could just be me. But that being said, I do believe that we have done a very good job of going over this budget as much as we could at all our meetings, even with the, maybe some questions and issues that I have. So I appreciate it. Y'all being willing to listen to my questions and comments about what I'm trying to do here.
All right, Rob. All right, there is a motion to adopt the budget in a second. All those in favor?
Madam Chairman, we'll pass the time for a public hearing.
Oh, we sure have, Lisa, thank you, I'm sorry. All right. We have a public hearing on the proposed PRD to amend the zoning ordinance. We'll have the public hearing where anyone is able to speak in, on the, on the, on the proposed PRD. And the application, this is, this was table for my fourth meeting. First hearing was held on the planning commission on May fifteenth, twenty nineteen. And there is one change that I will read, and then I will open the public hearing. There was one change that reads, all PRD lots shall have public water and public sewer. All PRD lots shall have public, excuse me, no safety tanks permitted. Developers shall be responsible for all costs to connect to public water and public sewer, regardless of political boundaries, to include all taps, fire plugs in main, as well as the cost for any property or easel acquisition. So I will open the public hearing. Is there anyone who would like to speak in favor of the PRD, the proposed change of the order? No one would like to speak in favor? Anyone who'd like to speak in opposition? Is there any questions or discussion? Pause the public hearing. Is, is there a motion?
Motion to approve zoning ordinance as presented.
Okay, and I will second. All those in favor? Motion here is approved. All right, Mr. County Manager, you're up next.
This will be the last time the board will see this particular program of work, because it will start anew after the fiscal year begins July first. Most of the projects have been completed, and the ones that have not been totally completed are well underway. Let me hit some of the highlights. Item number two, pitch drive, the board approved a EMC engineering to begin that design of that road and water line installation. So that is ongoing. Elsie Park number four, we do have a chipping and grinding bid out. Vicar grinding should start in about thirty days to begin that chipping and grinding process and transport all that material offsite. The rail and trails number five, that longer way to project is, the bid has been awarded tonight by the board, and that, and all sections, all phases of that project should be completed by, by the fall. Number seven, at the airport, the wildlife fence project, a lot of the materials have been delivered, so that project is ongoing, and that should be finished probably be late September of this year. And that will finish the fence, perimeter fence around the entire airport, along with security gates. Number nine, the airport runway and crack seal project, the crack seal project has been completed, and the runway portion will be completed next week. And that's all using G-NC brands. Number fourteen, the master plan has been approved tonight, so that project is totally completed. Once we get the final comprehensive plan, we'll put it on the website for public consumption. Number fifteen is still being reviewed by the county attorney, the DSA's reroute of the stream, that project. Number sixteen, the monument sign at the business park has been installed, and the , we're waiting for the veneer base of stone to be laid. Number seventeen, clearance throughout thirty-five acres of the business park, that is on bid. The bid, the pre-bid meeting is June the twenty-seventh, the bid opening is July the ninth, and the board consideration should be July the sixteenth. And number eighteen, the chipping and grinding of Elsie Park, that project should begin very soon and last for about ninety days. And all the other projects have been completed, and on, the next meeting on July the eighth, so next Monday, July the, Monday, July the eighth is the next meeting, due to the July fourth holiday schedule. So the next meeting on Monday, July the eighth, you'll see a new program of work of all the items contained in the approved budget.
And that's it? Anybody have any questions?
I've got one quick question for you. When I was reading with the forestry boss about thirty-five acres, I think we're requiring that everyone do a bid bond. A bid bond?
A bid bond, a bid bond?
Yeah.
Yes, we're requiring a bid bond, yes.
Is that typically required on that small job, like a fifty thousand dollars? Is it, do we, it seems like it's going to add an additional cost.
It's guaranteed.
We have a very small risk, a very small job.
Right. But we're not requiring a performance of payment bonds. That's only requiring probably a hundred thousand dollars. So we're not even going to require that, because it's a small project. But a bid bond makes sure whoever the, the successful bidder is, to make sure they follow through with the work, and they don't run away from us.
So we do that at any cost?
We typically do that on every bid, don't we, Nancy?
Yeah, everything's over.
So we typically do a bid bond on everything, just to make sure the successful bidder follows through, signs the contract and begins work. Because if they run away from the bid, then if we don't have a bid bond, then the county is out of all that work and effort, and we have to go and do it again. But if they give us a bid bond to protect our bid process, and if they run away, we can cash that bond in and have those funds available to go and do the, rebid the project at their expense, not ours. But we are not requiring a performance of payment bond.
Okay.
And any other questions? Back to the reading. Mr. Towne?
Yes, ma'am, I have one item here, and this is the first reading of the orders to rescind the Mulberry Grove Special Tax District ordinance. Back in two thousand three, we adopted an ordinance to create a special tax district for the Mulberry Grove, which is a development in the south part of County, which is north of, one eight-five is north of, North Coby County line. And the, the bonds were issued in order for the developer to install a sewer lane from North Coby County up to the, to the project site. And we had a, in order to make sure that they paid the bonds, we created a special tax district, which you're allowed to do by law. And that special tax district was for that, the development area only. And now that the bonds have been paid back in full, there's no need to have a special tax district for that particular project. And what this will do will repeal section six point one seven three of the Mulberry Grove Special, of the Mulberry Grove ordinance. And, and after, if it's, if you go for it on the next, after the next meeting, that section only will be repealed. This will be the first reading of the ordinance.
All right, thank you. And this is the first reading and the second reading, and both are scheduled for July the eighth. Is there, does anyone have anything else?
No.
Is there, there's no need for executive session?
No.
Okay.
Well, we need to bring up the cable tax franchise fee so that we can vote that.
We start that, that connection.
Next to you.
At least give you an update on the progress.
Right.
But it, it's, that whole statute, it's, it's kind of looping, it's a mess.
Motion to adjourn? I'll make the motion. Is there a second? All in favor? Thank you, thank you for being here.